It's 6:30. Let's start. Do we need an executive session, John?
I have no need for one.
Anybody else? Okay, no to that. Do we need to amend the agenda?
I have no need to.
Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda? Motion and seconded. All in favor? Minutes. Anything on the minutes from last meeting?
If not, I will hang on.
Well, I do if nobody else does. Okay, so at the beginning, we've got Hooker making the motion to go into executive session and Mills seconding it. At the end, we have Mills making the motion and Hooker seconding it. I know I didn't make the motion, so...
I think we reversed the motion.
Yeah, so that's reversed. The other thing I...
Is the first page?
No, it's the first is right. And I messed up the back one.
Okay, that's fine, but I just would like it.
I see. Do we always have it both in both places?
Yes.
All right, so yes. I can reverse either one. The second one?
The second one needs to be reversed. First one is, I believe, right.
We've done that so far without changing the signature page. What else have you got?
Uh, and then on the bridge update, given this, well, I had this before, but now, given this letter that we just got and that it's probably going to go to Act 250, I really think we ought to have a little more in our minutes about that discussion. It was a pretty long discussion. It was pretty, to me, pretty evident that there was a consensus that we did not like the new configuration. That's not in there. I mean, I'm just thinking if we go to Act 250 and we've just got four sentences on an hour and a half discussion, it shows we weren't very concerned about it. I would just like to see some more in there about that, if that's possible.
You've also got the recording of it, too.
I know, but again, the minutes, you know, if we could at least get...
You can either supplement the minutes or send them the Peg TV recording or the recording from Zoom.
From Zoom.
Or all three.
Or, you know, maybe just add something to the minutes about the fact that, you know, the full thing is on there. Something. I'm just thinking if they come in and look at our minutes and they see that, that's, well, I guess they aren't very concerned.
Normally, the minutes only reflect the action that's happening. However, and we don't need the transcript usually, but if we were to pay Kelly a little bit of time to go back to her materials, would you be able to generate some more of a summary?
Yeah, I can. I mean, but, we have to remember one thing, Dave.
Yeah.
You guys had all the information. I got nothing, except what was discussed. I had nothing to go back to.
Okay.
You guys had the PowerPoint. I had nothing.
Can we get her that PowerPoint?
Of course, if you'd like it, yeah.
Okay, I, I, I mean, I'm not, it's not, I'm just...
I was speaking. I'm sorry. It was easy to criticize, but when I don't have the information, this is what I have.
I'm not criticizing. Okay? Please, I am not criticizing. I'm just saying that, given the aspect of all this, I think a little more in there is warranted.
And are you talking about select board comments, audience comments?
Audience, yeah. I think both. I mean, there was a number of people put in scenarios of what could possibly happen. And maybe, and maybe if you just ref, I mean, maybe we can just reference the recordings. That if people want more, they can see the recordings. Maybe a sentence as far as that goes. I'm fine with that. I just...
I would think that because I know we've gotten in the past, you get too involved with what you're putting in your minutes. Keep them as narrow as you can.
You want it as narrow as you can, anyway.
Huh?
You want it to be as narrow as you can.
Yeah, that's...
Maybe, maybe that's the answer. A sentence reference, and then we can, at Act 250, we always have priority status.
We can reference, yes.
We can appear and testify on all of our concerns and/or submit minutes which will reference the recordings and hopefully ask them to...
Because you two, you get wordy.
You get too wordy. It opens the town up for lawsuits.
Yeah, it comes back to my...
Lawyer can turn that stuff on the dime.
Okay, well, that was just mine.
I understand where you're coming from, too, yeah.
So why don't we hold off on the minutes until the next meeting? We'll add at least the one sentence.
Yeah, you could do that where...
That might change the signature page.
You could refer to the recording.
Refer to the recording. I'm, I'm fine with that, too. I just think it, it needs to look like there's more. That's all I'm saying.
And another thing is, that wasn't a public hearing?
No, it wasn't.
I realize that, but if we...
It was just a presentation.
I know, but if we decide we want a public hearing, here's some more evidence we've got that, yes, we've got all these comments. They need to be heard by more than just one person. Again.
It's probably something I can do without even having to worry Kelly about it. I've got the draft of the minutes. I can add the minutes, add the sentence and the references and bring it to the next meeting.
That's fine. That's fine. I'm good with that. I just, yeah. And I wasn't being critical, Kelly. I'm just, okay?
Sometimes, I'll let you do this one, okay?
No, I'm just, anyway. All right, so, um, okay, we'll do that next time. Orders. Any questions on the orders?
I think I have, but I'll have a slight fight.
All right, I guess, all right, so, anybody else?
I do know.
All right, there was something from Terrian in Tenacity or Tenacity, 3634. What's that?
Terrier Tenacity is our web design people that maintain our website and update it whenever we ask them to. So it's, I think they charge us on a monthly basis for doing that.
I thought it was, there was a guy...
Jackson Waylon. He's now doing business for some reason as Terrier Tenacity because he has beloved terrier dogs.
Okay, all right. No, that's why it's unfamiliar. I just, yep, that's all I had.
It's not how I would do my marketing, but okay.
Well, exactly. All right, so I guess...
So if there's no more questions on orders, I'll send all four down to you. There's two orders and two debit card documents. Very good, Joe. I'll take care of that.
She just can't take you out anymore.
Your office table.
If anybody doesn't recognize Joe Gagne, without your name, they don't deserve it.
Seen a lot of coffee over there.
If only we had bigger, bigger tables.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no happy medium. They're either a little too small or too big.
Here's a payroll for you, Joe.
Tom, you needed the payroll. Can you give me the number?
You need $11,852.76?
$11,000.
$852.76.
Thank you.
Town managers report.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Acting Chair Mills. First of all, we're sorry to report Alicia's a little bit under the weather, and she asked us to go forward without her, so get well soon, Alicia, if you're watching. The town staff enjoyed a staff appreciation picnic on Friday, September 10th at the rec area. It's always good to rub elbows and have some fun with the town staff and let them know how much we appreciate them, so that worked out well. The new Highway 550 truck has been ordered from Auto Sabre Ford in Comstock, New York. Estimated delivery time is a mere 12 to 14 weeks. Much better than we might have expected, right? Our friends from Sullivan and Powers performed most of their onsite annual audit of the town's books during the week of September 7th. They will be finishing up on Tuesday of next week. Based upon past history, it will likely be several months before all of us get the final audit report, usually in January or February, about the same time that they come down to present their findings. A letter has gone out to all residents abutting the several potential sidewalk sites now under consideration by the town's engineers, encouraging them to give us their input through an online survey. I think Joe Gagne was instrumental in that effort with that suggestion. During Pittsford Day activities, I walked around the crowd handing out flyers encouraging people to take the survey. The online survey is open to all residents and regardless of where you live, and it'll be available through October 15th. So if you haven't gone online and made your, made your voice heard, please do so. Whether you like them, hate them, or something in between, we'd love to hear from you. The town's Veterans Day event will take place, as usual, on November 11th at 11:00 a.m. This time it'll be a Thursday here at the town offices. So far, we've locked in music teacher Carolyn Bruce and the Lothrip School Singers, the Pittsburgh Scouts, Pittsburgh resident and TAPS performer Kalen Carvey, and Pastor Joel Tate from the Furness Brook Wesleyan Church. I am now on the hunt for a keynote speaker for this year's event. Any and all suggestions are welcome. The town, as we have discussed, is in the process of sending out 11 letters to delinquent property taxpayers who have two or more years of delinquency with a balance of more than $1,000, in hope, of course, for voluntary compliance. Ultimately, a few of these subject parcels may be exposed to an eventual tax sale, which would probably take place in December or January, if past is any indication of the future. On the Monday, on the morning of Thursday, September 9th, some damage was done to several roof trusses and/or braces on the interior of the Depot Hill Covered Bridge. The town managers notified V-Trans and reached out to a contractor with covered bridge repair experience to assess the damage and provide an estimate for needed repairs if we decide not to do them in-house. It may be that we can do them in-house. At least that's the input we have from our V-Trans Bridge Inspection Expert, who looked it over and agreed with our contractor that the damages all look fairly modest, relatively minor.
Joe, do we know who did the damage?
We don't.
Sounds like a question.
Chief Warfel was down there as soon as we had the report. He did some snooping about, from areas where the truck may have come from, i.e. farms in Florence, and then delivery trucks leaving there and heading to Route 7. None of that has panned out, but he has also spread the word to other people who he thinks might eventually learn of a damaged truck. So while the trail is relatively cold, I know he did a pretty thorough check as to possible causes. That's very unfortunate, of course. We just received a, an email from our friends at Vermont Agency of Transportation about the status of the bridge replacement project. As you remember, Carolyn Cota is the design engineer working on that. She addressed the board at the September 1st Select Board Meeting. To quote her brief email, she says, "We have decided to pursue our plans as presented to you." I should point out that she has had several meetings with her colleagues to discuss concerns that Mr. Conway and the town expressed at the September 1st meeting. However, she says, "We are evaluating, we decided to pursue the plans as presented. We are evaluating reducing the widths of the shoulders of the bridge. No other changes to the plans are anticipated." And she again links to her PowerPoint presentation, if we wanted to look at that again.
I wonder why they would want to reduce the shoulders at this point, all of a sudden, if it was all set in place. Doesn't make sense to me.
Well, no, if you got the bridge completely redesigned, I mean, I would think the expensive part is the design of the bridge.
Yeah.
I could certainly ask her about what prompted that change, and if so, why can't other changes be made?
I'm curious, yeah. They can change the design on that part of it.
Right.
But road is easy, you'd think.
I don't know. I just question as to why we would...
Wouldn't hurt to ask for a little bit further detail. And back to the report. The town manager will be out of town Thursday, Friday, and Monday, the 16th, 17th, and 20th.
Okay, select board remember remarks. Anybody? Public comment. Do we have any public on the air that wants to comment or in person?
We thought we might hear from Jeff Carlton. Is he on there, on our list? Okay. He, by the way, points out that everything's looking good for the Pittsburgh Second Annual Tractor Parade to take place October 23rd, all right, and it will both leave from and return to the Village Farm. And that's, that's the good news he was giving us, that V-Trans allowed that, even though that means more tractors on big roads for longer time. So we appreciate...
They authorized from both of them?
So we appreciate V-Trans' cooperation on that, and we're all excited about the event.
Full business. Pittsburgh Day 2021 recap.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, Acting Chair. We had a very successful event. You know it. You saw it with your own eyes, the car show, I believe, is where I found you. It was great weather, very well attended. The 40th Army Band was a real hit. A late helicopter scratch by the Vermont National Guard did not slow Chief Hooker down because he was able to bring Life Net in to save the day, and they were greeted with a lot of excitement at the Pittsburgh Day event. We had food trucks for the first time. That seemed to be popular and much less work for our hard-working firefighters. The car show was another dazzling success, and we had an emcee for the first time, and I think that lightens the load and helps for a better flow of events and better information for people at the event. So I'd say, all things considered, it was very good Pittsburgh Day.
I think it was probably the most attended one that I've seen.
There was a while. It was hard to move down there. There was a lot of people.
All day long. It was. From about 2:15 or, 2:10, I thought, boy, it's not going to have too many people in the day, but all of a sudden, it just came from everywhere. And it stayed that way most of the day. Very good.
And of course, we've sent out thank you letters to as many people as we could remember who did big, heavy lifting. And if you haven't gotten the letter yet, I'll probably remember and get you a related one. So thank you.
And if we missed it, we still thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Blanket thank you to everybody.
Yes. Update on town of Chittenden plans to reclassify Class 4 roads to trails.
Yes, this is not our first time through this, this event, and like several previous episodes, this was canceled at the last minute. And it appears as though neighbors are once again forming a circular firing squad up there, such that the town doesn't want to get involved and stir the pot anymore by making any changes for now. So I think they're once again reassessing the situation, and as long as nothing happens, that's good. Even if something happens, we'll make sure to monitor it so that nothing bad happens in terms of our access to our water source, which is accessed by West Road Extension, which was on the list of roads to be reclassified.
Should we skip ahead to Village Farm now with Donna here, because others may take a little time? So, consider approving submission of grant application on behalf of the Pittsburgh Village Farm.
We have Donna Wilson here. I think Terry White's on the Zoom call, who both wanted to talk about the fact that while they didn't get their first grant approved, they got valuable feedback from the state, and they hope to submit something very similar.
Correct. We were invited to resubmit. They basically ran out of money. A lot of the money went into housing. And, okay, so this is what is, you know, what we added to it, and we'll put in as an attachment to the application, is everything that we were involved in the summer. And that would have been the summer program between the farm, the library, and the town recreation department. That served, there were 100 family, you know, people as far as coming to those events. It was well-attended. I went, I have, my grandson went to some of the programs on Thursdays. It was excellent, really nice lineup. And then the gardens, if you have a chance, take a look at the gardens that the kids did. They're really wonderful. So that will continue. The next thing that we did is, we had, we received word that we were chosen by a congressional appropriation grant through Bernie Sanders for $400,000. So that is something that we could add to this. Now, it's a 50-50 match because they put it under historic classification, but they are letting us use in-kind matching funds, which would be the cost of the house, you know, the paint job, the labor that has gone into it. So, you know, we think we're doing okay with the gal from Congressman Sanders' office with incoming September 26th, her visit to the farm. So again, that hasn't been approved yet, so, through Congress. So if it is, we are on that list. And the last part, we talked about a time issue, you know, that, yes, we, you know, we really need this to go forward because the house is just getting more and more in disrepair, deterioration of the porches, so-and-so, you know, the cost of construction, and when you do a budget, and then it changes. So we did put a time element into it, which we had in the first round, but everything else is the same.
And of course, with that first application, the board was happy to sign off on a document like this, pointing out that at a duly-held meeting on the topic, the Select Board heard from the Village Farm and approved submitting it in the town's name, knowing that that's the only recipient that the state will want with, a town or an organization like ours. But all the work is done, and all the money passes through the Village Farm.
And it's the same on the...
So I'd make a motion if we support the application.
Any discussion from anybody?
Outside of...
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So I'll circulate this down the end of the hall, and I'll get it to you, Donna. You can either wait for it or make your copy. And when is your application deadline?
The 21st or the 22nd, right, Terry?
22nd, I believe. And we thank you very much for that approval.
I'm going to be, as you know, away for these next few days, but I'll be back by the 21st, so maybe that day I should sit down if the application's ready, or the next day, and someone needs to tell me where to point, where to click, because that portal I find very intimidating.
Exactly. Okay, I tried to get in it the other day. Terry, how about you? Did you try to get in? I tried to get in, I couldn't. So I will...
I have not, I have not attempted to get in.
Okay, I'll call... Her friend from Olympia was very helpful in the last cycle. Louis.
Yes.
He was very helpful. I know he's involved.
Yeah, but it's just them putting our names back in it for the resubmissions, so...
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
I'll pick that up now and make you a copy, so you can just get out if you'd like.
I was curious about the Brandon...
Sure.
Okay, so, um... Consider VLCT proposal to assist with recruitment and hiring of a new town manager.
Yes, Mr. Acting Chair. As you know, we had a poor friend from VLCT who sat through our three-hour meeting and finally got a chance to speak for a few minutes the other night, just in support of his written proposal that he had put in our packets last time. And the question really is before the board, do you want to hire VLCT on the quoted terms to help the town with its recruitment efforts? You could certainly decide that now, or if you wanted to wait for Alicia Malay, that's certainly in your prerogative as well.
I think so. I'm not sure.
That was my sense of it.
What was the, there was, what, 8 to 12,000?
8 to 12,000 range, depending on how much labor they had to do. Some of the costs are fixed, like the advertising, but a lot of it's just the labor.
They bill actual costs.
Right.
I'm not really certain.
All of a sudden, it wasn't as well as it...
Any discussion?
I had suggested maybe we put an ad in the paper, but I guess if we're going to go that route, that won't be necessary, will it?
Well, they will do the ads, and they'll do electronics, and they'll have a very good broad reach, because they do this for many, many towns.
One of our town managers we, we wound up with because we hadn't had in the paper at one time. I'm not sure who. Do you remember who that was? I don't know if it was John or it was, what's her name there that served?
Kathleen.
Kathleen, it might have been, but doesn't matter.
Okay, so I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, Janice, I'll circulate the document and gather the signature of the Select Board Chair, it says. You can cross it out and say Vice Chair, or whatever you want to do. Page 2 there. And Dave, I had hoped to have a town profile and a draft of the job description for tonight. I don't, but it certainly will be in your packets for October 6th.
Okay, so we will take that off the agenda then, review the draft?
Right.
Yes. Okay. All right. And this, I guess, back to you. Does anybody else?
Yep.
Oh, well, as Donna wants, says, "Consider Brandon's request for temporary assistance with police coverage."
Yes, Brandon certainly has a larger and more well-staffed department usually, but they've had some attrition, and they've had a situation that's arisen that requires some help with seven shifts coming up in these next few weeks, where they will only have one relatively inexperienced officer on duty. Hopefully, the criminals of Brandon are not watching now. But they've asked, can we help out by, I won't call it loaning, I'll call renting out, at our cost, the necessary officers to work together with their one remaining officer for those shifts. I will point out that Brandon was quite good to us to let us borrow their cruiser for a couple of months while ours was in the shop out of commission. And so it's not a money loser, because we'll get paid everything that we pay our officers to cover. Chief Warfel has made inquiry, and he seems to have five already of the seven shifts covered. And we could certainly, if we need a cruiser to go with him, I think we could certainly loan him for those seven shifts, since they were so kind to us, loaning us a cruiser when we needed them.
John, what was the cost of the car we were renting, beating them?
Yeah, nothing at all. That was, that was... Yeah, so I'm saying the cruiser we would not charge for if they needed us to...
That would be my thought. They were good enough to us.
Right. I guess the only thing, I guess I would, because we did have to put gas in it, and if I remember right, there was a small repair we had to do on it. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not throwing out, we charge them full price, but we at least out-of-cover our fuel and...
If we have some out-of-pocket, I'm sure...
Yeah, the out-of-pocket.
Out-of-pocket stuff, right.
To charge for the cruiser, I'd say, no.
Okay. So, do I get a motion?
I'll make a motion if we allow our officers to go through those shifts.
With just, with out-of-pocket costs as well?
Out-of-pocket costs.
Plus their wages being sourced.
Exactly. Got a second? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will tell the head and chief the good news, that Pittsburgh's happy to return the favor.
Oh, discussion of town's COVID-19 response and policies.
It's basically a placeholder, Dave. As you know, you consume the news like the rest of us. Both the president and the governor have instructed their workforces that they must have the COVID vaccination, or at least submit to weekly testing. I really don't know, because we haven't really inquired, which among the town staffers may not be vaccinated. I just wanted you to have an opportunity, given that the president and the governor are encouraging other employers to follow suit, whether you, as a board, want to insist that employees have the vaccination.
I think it's a personal choice. It's a tough question.
I don't advocate one way or the other. I just wanted you to have the option.
I have very mixed feelings about it both ways. I have very mixed feelings about it both ways, you know.
As do I.
Yeah, you need to protect, I mean, in the fire service, it's a good area, but you certainly can't handle firefighters, you know, it's a secret area, it's a people. And that seems to be a contentious thing right now, and it kind of bothers me a little bit. If they have to, and don't, like other places, they're making them get tested, so you know. So it's one way or the other, you can't have it both ways, and that's where nobody talks to anybody anymore. And I think that's where we gotta start coming together, this country's a deep needle.
One thing we could do, as just a start-off point, is we simply inquire which employees have had the vaccine.
Yeah, I don't think that, I mean, you have to be vaccinated, kids have to be vaccinated to go to school now. And we don't have polio anymore, we don't have any of these diseases we used to have because of vaccines.
I would, of course, talk with the union first, if you wanted to go that route. But we haven't even inquired, so I don't know. I presume most everybody's vaccinated, but I just don't know.
I have had my shots, but I don't feel I should tell somebody else what to do. Maybe wrong.
I would agree with you, it's a personal choice, it's, it's, and I guess if it comes, from my perspective is, and I don't really think we should be asking people, clearly, I have no problem with you asking the union as to...
Whether we could...
Whether we could, if we choose to, but I don't think we should decide at this meeting that we're going to, especially when we don't know if we can.
Yep.
But even if we can, I guess what I would say is, if, and it does get a lot worse, and we feel we need to go down that route, I still don't think we should force people to be vaccinated, but if you are unvaccinated, maybe a weekly test would not be unreasonable.
That's where I was coming from, yeah.
That's, that's my thoughts.
You need to keep your people safe.
Yes.
Let me at least begin with a chat with the union, and see what their position is as to whether I can inquire with their consent, and if anything else would be possible from their point of view.
I'm pretty sure the employer...
And of course, we won't take any action.
Pretty sure Ken is an employer.
I could ask VLCT as well for...
Get a clarification.
Get a clarification before we even have the discussion.
Exactly.
That might be a tough one, Tom, because if somebody's out sick, you legally can't ask them why they're out.
No, that's what I'm saying, it's a two-layered knife.
We'll gather more information about what we can gather.
But you can have them tested, though, I believe, though.
And John, if you do the weekly vaccine, I recommend you, and this is just speaking from my experience, I recommend you set up a testing time with the state, so that it goes through that.
Make a...
And those appointments are pretty tough to get sometimes.
So, let's check with VLCT, the union, and the State Department of Health.
Today, about another 122 of them out, one more death, and I forgot how many in the intensive care.
There were no ICU beds in the state on Saturday.
There are no beds. No, I had a friend who was at the age of a hospital right now, and they came in because they had beds. And he's an emergency room, been there since six this morning.
Did I see a story online about somebody who died because 43 different ICUs turned him away? Because he just couldn't get in?
Probably.
Oh, yeah?
Wow.
Let's face it, that's not a hoax. That's here.
And now there's supposedly another variant, instead of just the Delta Mu.
M U, I think.
Okay, so, review assessors' errors, errors and omissions, parcels 1593 and 1012.
Well, I feel sorry for the assessor, because I wouldn't call this necessarily an error, but she's cleaning up her records, which is good. As to parcel 1593, she describes that there is an error with the name as recorded by the assessor's office versus the deed recorded, and she'd like to remove Charles Parker as an owner, as this was an error. Charles Parker is not a deeded owner. There's no change in value, only the name change. And while we're at it, as to parcel 1012, there's an error with the name as recorded by the assessor's office versus the deeded record. Jason Tripp was removed from the deeded ownership in 2020. Again, no value change, just a name correction only.
Do you mean the motion?
She needs their permission to...
Yes, to make that change. She actually, you know, as I, we discussed it, actually...
Hang on, let me get a second to my motion.
I'm sorry.
Somebody want a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, now you can talk, Tom, sorry.
She actually said, you know, this is pretty much good hygiene to get the board's approval. It might not strictly be necessary, but she would appreciate it.
Yeah, I wouldn't talk to her.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Janice?
Very good.
Okay, uh, discussion of potential nature conservancy purchase of private property, Jay Binham.
Yes, John is here, I believe, with us, and he'd like to address their proposal as to what you have in mind, and how it might affect Pittsburgh. Go ahead, John.
Great, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, we at the Nature Conservancy have applied for funding, for partial funding for the purchase of the property that is owned by Ron Smith and...
Todd Wheeler.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't remember his name. And, and so, we've applied for funding for that. It would be in addition to land that we already own, up in the Taconic Hills, on the west side of town, it's in the conservation zone. And our, our, uh, our goal would be to allow for public access, and as you may know, we do pay taxes on all of our lands. So, so because we are applying for funding from Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, they like to have some indication of what the town, how the town feels about the project. And I can tell you a little bit more about the project. The land itself, this is going back to your previous discussion about errors and omissions, because apparently the Lister's made an error back many years ago, and only listed the property at 138 acres. We're, we're going to be surveying the property, and we believe that it, it contains 346 acres.
That's a big place.
Yeah, that's a big difference. And so, the upshot is that we've probably been paying taxes for Mr. Smith and Mr. Wheeler for several years, because most of that land that is in contention is, the buts are lands up on the mountain. So I'd be happy to take any questions you might have about the project or the property, or if you want me to go into any more detail, I'd be happy to. Yes, sir?
Oh, no, I, no, John, you have something?
I have two or three. You talk about taxation. Would you pay a reduced current-use type of taxation, which is more like $150 an acre versus maybe $1,000 an acre? And what is, what is the tax status of the property now? Are they also in current use?
They are not in current use right now.
So we might see less taxation, but some taxation with your ownership?
No, because in current use, the state makes up the difference.
Okay, all right. Any public access concerns that we should have? In other words, how is the property used now by the public, if at all, and would that change under nature conservancy ownership?
Yes, so the, right now, the LeBrake Road, this is on LeBrake Road, which is the town trail, and LeBrake Road is gated at the bottom by the, the owners of various parcels of LeBrake Road. And, and so, what we are proposing is that the gate could remain, but folks could walk around the gate and go up onto this land. And, and then, there's other ways of access. It's, it's kind of an interior lot, so it's a little difficult to get to. But there are, there is one inholding on this parcel of 12 acres, and a camp, and then, and then another camp that goes with this property. And what we would propose with those is that, that the, we would lease the camp, the existing camp on the property we would acquire, back to the hunters who use the camp. And they would, in exchange for that, they would maintain the road, and maintain, and allow for access for, you know, various things, hunting, fishing, you know, various things. And, and they would also maintain the road to the inholding camp as well.
My last question has to do with mosquito breeding territory. The Brandon Lester Salisbury Ocean Pittsburgh Mosquito District, soon to be Otter Creek Mosquito District, likes to sample and, and make applications of larvicide where there are particular problems identified, before they become adult-biting mosquitoes. And then sometimes they like to drive up and downtown roads with adult spraying if their larvicide efforts have slipped and let some adults hatch. Does the Nature Conservancy have other properties within the mosquito district, and have you been cooperative with the efforts of the BLSG district to help tamp down some of the problems caused by mosquitoes?
Uh, we do have other lands in the Otter Creek Swamps area. I don't know if I can answer your question, though, as to whether we've been cooperative, it's not my department. And we, we basically, you know, our, our goal is to follow the science, and if the science tells us that that's an effective control method that limits the impacts on the environment, then generally, we're, we're agreeable to those kinds of things. But I don't, I can't, you know, I don't know the history of that. And I'm not sure, I don't think I've ever heard that we've been approached by anyone, you know, a lot of the lots that we have in the swamps are, are very interior lots that it would be difficult to get into, to do any spraying, other than aerial.
In the past, that land, I'm quite familiar with it, in 1953, I was involved with some other people on harvesting timber on that same land that you're talking about.
Okay.
Ron Smith, Ron Smith and Eddie Wheeler have harvested timber, different areas of that land over the years. Is this practice going to be able to continue under your possession of the land, or will that be lost?
Uh, well, it, it will probably be, we, we probably will not manage timber on that land. And one of the reasons for that is, this, this area has been identified as, as a regional corridor for wildlife, from the Green Mountains to the Adirondacks. And we believe there, there need to be places, our scientists say there need to be places along that chain, that, you know, that basically are allowed to, to be, to exist as, as natural forest. Now, we do, you know, we, we, just a couple of years ago in Pittsburgh, we acquired some land near Sugar Hollow, and we resold that land with conservation restrictions that allowed for timber harvest on that land. So we're not against timber harvest, per se. We just, our science, again, going back to the science, our science tells us that there are certain areas that are important for, for wildlife in particular ways, and there are other areas where forest management is perfectly appropriated.
So, I wish you would answer my question a little more directly. Will there be timber harvesting permitted on that property at some regulated, you know, prescribed forestry management plan, or will it be off the table completely?
Uh, it would be, our, our goal is that it would be not something that we would pursue as the owner, as the owner of the property.
Hank?
I'm, I'm unclear about the status of the camps. They're on, up on the...
Okay.
Let me explain that to you a little more.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a camp that's an inholding on the property that is...
What does that mean? What does that mean? What's an inholding?
Okay, so it's, it's completely surrounded by lands of Smith-Wheeler. Smith-Wheeler sold 12 acres to Daleens, and they built a camp on it. And that land is completely contained within the Smith-Wheeler property, and there's a road to it. Then there's another camp that is on the property that we are hoping to purchase, and, and that camp will become owned by the Nature Conservancy if we are successful in acquiring this land. And, and so, our goal with that camp is to, to lease it back to the owner, the users of that camp, for basically, you know, I, I don't think we can do it for nothing, but we would lease it back in exchange for their assistance in a number of different ways. Maintaining the road, being our eyes and ears out there to make sure that people aren't, you know, running ATVs all over the place, or that kind of thing.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, sure.
So, my question, if you, if this deal goes through, obviously mechanized access will be allowed to those camps, but, and I haven't been up there in years, but I know there used to be four-wheeler trails that got you over the mountain towards High Pond in different places. Will those be shut down if you own this property?
Those, so there is, LeBrake Road is a legal trail. I don't know how far it is a legal trail. I believe that, you know, on, on your, your maps, it, it ends at some point. However, that road goes all the way through to High Pond Road.
Yes.
And that road has been used by ATVs in the past, it's been used by mountain bikers. As far as we're concerned, you know, that, you know, we, we don't have any oversight over that road. That's, that's your road, and your legal trail, and you have the power to allow for whatever goes on, on that road. As the landowner, as, as the potential landowner of the, the other land, we are not, I mean, we, we, we will consider proposals to make a connector trail of some kind or other, but we're not gonna just allow for ATV traffic on, on, on the private roads that are on the property. The public road, like I said, we have no control of that.
Anybody else? What is it that you're looking for from the select board?
Oh, I'm looking for an indication of support for the project, or, or just your, your... or just your, you know, if that is your pleasure. If not, I'm just looking for an indication of what your level of support or lack thereof is.
You would accept support or maybe even neutrality, but you'd be worried about opposition, right?
Well, I, you know, yes, in a way, yeah. I mean, we have applied to the board. They are a public instrumentality. They, you know, they take public opinion into account in their award decisions for projects. And so they, you know, that's why they like to reach out. They like us to reach out to select boards and planning commissions and conservation commissions and other entities in towns to see if they would support the project.
You have a question, Hank?
No, I have a comment. I hope you will hold this over for another meeting. There are some people that would like to talk to me before I make a if I remember or not.
Can I ask a question?
Uh huh.
Sure. I just wondered how this came about. Did they, did Smith contact you or was this on the open market, the land?
No, Ron Smith contacted us. We had been, we had, you know, been friendly, neighborly with Ron and Ed for a number of years, or at least our stewardship staff had been. And so when it came time for them to sell, they came to us. You know, they've sold a number of parcels in town and in the area. And, you know, they like to work, you know, outside of the MLS listing and just work with people. And so we were happy to do an appraisal, to come up with fair market value and make an offer to them and, you know, and go from there.
So what's the board's pleasure?
I feel as though this land has been under multiple uses. And forestry management was one of Ron Smith's big pushes. He made money in the forestry industry. I'm in the forestry industry and that's why I appreciate that land for forest purposes. I'm all for good management, different management for different areas. And therefore, I feel it's always a shame to pull this land out of the production of timber products. My understanding is that you are getting a tax relief through the current use program. I have land. We have 160 acres about a mile from where you are in Sudbury, as a crow would fly. I feel as though you are using the state's tax program to minimize your taxes through the current use program, yet you're not going to do any timber harvesting. I cannot endorse this personally.
Yes, I understand where you're coming from and I respect it. And I, you know, like I said, we are not against timber management. And we actually do some timber management on one of our properties. We are able, though, to enroll in the current use program under a different category than a private individual called the conservation lands category. This was set up by the legislature, I want to say maybe 15 years ago. And the thought was with the legislature was that, you know, there are various goals that the state has, one of which is timber production and agriculture. And that's largely what the current use program supports. But there are other goals that the state has as well. Wildlife, natural resources of other kinds, water quality, and protection of rare, threatened and endangered species. And so that was the, I believe that was the legislature's impetus to expand the current use program to allow this conservation lands category. And so that's how we're able to enroll some of our land in that category.
So is the consensus of the board low weight for the next meeting? When Alicia's here? It will give us, we'll table it till the next meeting?
You don't have any time constraints you're dealing with in terms of another three weeks, do you?
Not necessarily. I mean, the board will meet at the end of this month. But they will, if they do make an award, they would have it contingent on, you know, some indication of the select board's decision on whether they want to support the project or not.
I mean, I'm torn. It's Wheeler's and Smith's land and they can do what they want with it. On the other hand, I agree with Joe, you know, you're taking the timber part away. We don't know what the tax implications are going to be for sure. You know, there's some issues I think that we need to take some time and discuss, so.
We'll table it till next meeting.
Do I get a second from anybody?
Oh, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we will table the discussion.
All right.
Our chairman will be back. She can weigh in on it and
And you're certainly welcome to join us again.
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Well, I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Take care. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we got Michael Blaisdell on there.
He's our chair of the district and I talked to him earlier. He was interested to see how that discussion would go. Maybe, Mike, would you like to comment on this at all? Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's what I was, you know, he didn't ask any questions during it, but if he's still there and wanted, if he has any comments, Michael? I guess not.
No, okay, go on.
Okay.
The only question that I would have is what is the status of that land? What land is it? Class one, class two? And does the Nature Conservancy have any interest in changing the class map, which would affect, like Joe was saying, the timber forestry part of it and also the use of the land? That would be the only thing that I would be wondering about.
Okay, we can look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
I have one question. Does this wildlife corridor come up?
This is the wildlife corridor right through here.
Well, this has been coming up, the wildlife corridor thing has been coming up for years. It started in Brandon. And they thought they were going to push it through in Brandon. There was a whole, you can only build fences and what, I mean, it was a whole, it was crazy.
That's a lot of acres.
Well, added to the other acres they've already got, yeah. Oh, yeah, no, they are pushing, I mean, they're down to me and I'm sure they would like to take me too. But they ain't going for a while, unless they got big pockets, so.
Nature Conservancy already owns 1,519.7 acres on the break, off of LeBrake.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they'll be pushing almost 1,000 acres. It's a big chunk of land.
I felt bad for Mr. Benham as soon as he mentioned wildlife corridors because I know he was talking to skeptics.
You know what happened with the damn frogs over here?
The animals are going to do it just because they always have, no matter what we do, exactly.
Anyway, so I guess, anything else tonight? So motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? All right.
Thanks everybody.